Okay, welcome this evening in May 2nd, City Commission Meeting. We have a forum, we'll begin our meeting in session. First thing on our agenda is invocation. Does anybody from the commission wish to do that?
I will. If you all pray with me. Lord Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for this time that we can come together with these young people as they lead us in the pledge to our country this evening. We pray your blessing on them and we pray for your guidance on us as a commission to make the best decisions possible to positively affect our community as a whole in every good way we can. So, Lord, we just thank you and we praise you and we let this up in your Son Jesus' holy name.
Amen. Next is Pledge of Allegiance. We have with us tonight Mr. Mrs. Kearns, excuse me, third grade class from Oil Hill Elementary. Would you come up and join us to lead us in the pledge allegiance? If you would tell us your name and what you like about Eldorado or your school?
My name is Gavin and I like that there's schools, stores, and houses that we can live and learn and buy stuff from.
My name is Gavin Cooper and what I like about Eldorado is parks.
My name is Shay and I like the softball field.
My name is Milan and I like the public library.
My name is Carly and I like all the different helpful people here.
My name is Soraya. My name is Soraya and I like the swimming pools.
My name is Aiden and I like the Eldorado Sea Dragons.
My name is Calvin and I like the bike path over by Dylan's.
Great. Well, it's around you. Would you lead us in the pledge allegiance? Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, guys. Thank you for a good job. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Kearns, third grade class. Next on our agenda, we have a couple of proclamations. First is the Elks Lodge National Youth Week. Is there someone from the Elks Lodge you'd like to address or speak?
Phil Wickwire, 341 Village Road, Eldorado, Kansas. Mr. Mayor, City Commission, Mr. Llewellyn, City Staff. On behalf of the Eldorado Elks Lodge, we want to once again thank you very much for your continued support of our efforts for the youth of Eldorado and for Butler County. And with this proclamation tonight, we will once again start our youth week with a finale of Kids Safe Night Out on May 13th. Again, thank you all for your support. We do appreciate you and we simply could not do it without you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wickwire. With that, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the goal of all Elks is to provide a wholesome and character-building environment for boys and girls of every community within our influence and to assist and safeguard America's young men and women during their passage into responsible and rewarding adulthood. And whereas the Eldorado Elks is one of the leading fraternal organizations in our which support our local youth activities and projects, and whereas the Eldorado Elks Lodge has helped with financial support of the MDA Summer Camp, Bethlehem House, Special Olympics, Little League Football, Catch, Bell Ringing for the Salvation Army Christmas for the Salvation Army Christmas Kettle, and hosted both Christmas and Thanksgiving dinners for the Salvation Army's less fortunate. And whereas the Eldorado Elks Lodge helps sponsor a national fire safety program donated to the local fire reserve fundraisers and helps support the Crime Stoppers Program. And whereas the Eldorado Elks Lodge sponsors many youth sports and drug education programs, Safe Night Out, and Flag Day activities. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Vince Haynes, Mayor of the City of Eldorado, do hereby proclaim the week of May 8th through May 14th as Eldorado Elks Lodge National Youth Week in the City of Eldorado, Kansas, and urge at all residents and institutions, public and private, to support all area youth activities, programs sponsored by themselves or others. In witness thereof, I hereto set my hand to cause the official seal of the City of Eldorado, Kansas, to be fixed this second day of May 2016. Okay. Next is American Legion Auxiliary Poppy Month. Is there anybody from the American Legion Auxiliary who'd wish to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. This is my first year at doing this, but I want to thank you for this proclamation. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you for everything that you do. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the American Legion Auxiliary adopted the poppy as its memorial flower, which pays tribute to the war dead and aids the living veterans and their families. And whereas the poppy as memorial for the American war dead is a tradition which began in the years following the First World War. And whereas contributions are used solely for children and youth and veterans affairs and rehabilitation in our local community. Now therefore I, Vince Haynes, Mayor of the City of Eldorado, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2016 as Poppy Month. Poppy Month in the City of Eldorado, Kansas, as an expression of gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy in Americans as American citizens. In witness thereof, I hereto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Eldorado to be affixed this second day of May 2016. With that? All right. Thank you. Moving on to personal appearances. With the municipal band.
Good evening. I'm Marlene Avery, 219 Hill Press, Tern, Eldorado. First off, I want to thank you all for your continued support of the band. It's been going on since 1923. I think it's a fabulous resource in this town to continue to allow Elks and high school students to continue with their music. You know, there aren't a whole lot of places where a 53-year-old woman can go and play. It's kind of great. I love it. So anyway, yeah, this is our 94th year. Our board this year is actually the same as it was last year. Barbara Templin is our vice president. Anita Sibley is our treasurer. Nancy Barnett is our secretary. Our president, we have Kelly Davidson and Neil Harrison are at large members. John Templin and Stephen Wilson will continue to be our directors this year. I believe this is 25 years for John and I believe maybe 24 years for John and five for Stephen. How many years, Sean? We will have our concerts in Forest Park there by the, at the band show. And this year, we're going to change it up just a little bit. We've had them at 8:00 in the evening before. This year, we're going to start at 7:30 so that maybe it's not quite so late when we finish up so that some of the families with younger children can come out and enjoy. Our first practice is going to be the 26th of this month at 7:30. We're hoping that it will be at the high school, but we haven't got that nailed down quite yet. And then our first concert will be the 2nd of June at 7:30 at Forest Park. Some of our fun dates are we have the Flag Day Celebration where we play along with the Elks Celebration there. And that's at 7:00 and that would be, of course, on Flag Day on the 14th of June. We'll have an ice cream social at 7:30 on the 23rd of June. And all of our proceeds from our ice cream social, which is our memorial concert, we honor our past members who have passed. And then we also have a bake sale on the 14th of July. And all of the proceeds from both of those go to a scholarship fund out at the college. I think that's about all I have for now. But we want to continue, or we want to, again, thank you for your support and invite you all out. We have a website that you can go and look at, or we're on Facebook and we try and put things on there each week to let you know. Another thing that we started last year that's kind of fun was that we have asked different organizations to come in. We called it hosting. We asked them to have like an employee appreciation evening and include a free concert in the park in their employee appreciation evening. And that's kind of fun because they come out and they bring out like bottled water and some freebies for the, you know, the audience and everything, which kind of was really fun last year. We had a good time with that. And it introduced us to some new people that didn't know we were around. Any questions?
Your bake sale, where's it going to be at?
It will be there at Forest Park. We reserved the pavilion there and we have our members all bring in baked goods and cookies and cakes and things and free will donations. We try and have some things that are sugar-free and gluten-free and nut-free and all of it so that we can kind of, you know, accommodate anyone who comes down. And the same with the ice cream social. It's also in the pavilion and we invite them to come down and have some ice cream. We also have baked goods at that time and for free will donation, they can enjoy some sweets and enjoy the concert.
Normally, your concerts are on Thursdays?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Yes, they are normally on Thursdays. The one that is out of place this year is Flag Day on the 14th. But yes, the rest of the year, or the rest of the season will be on Thursday evenings.
How many members are in the band approximately?
You know, we were just talking about that. It varies from week to week. I would say probably an average would be 45 to 50.
That's a big band, yeah. That's a neat thing. I know I can hear it from my house and often wander down, so I appreciate that. At 94 years, I didn't realize that. That's...
It started out actually as a boys' band and then they had to let us in.
Then it got better, right?
Exactly.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for that report. Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. And we, I would encourage everybody to support that. It's one of the, it is one of the unique things of our community.
There aren't very many of them around anymore.
That's right. So, encourage the citizens to do that. It's, it's a good Thursday evening.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Okay, next on our agenda are public appearances. Anybody from the audience wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Everybody's had a chance to see the minutes from our previous meeting. Have a chance to look at those ahead tonight if there's any questions or comments on our previous meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, on the second item on your consent agenda where it asks to de-license Prairie Trails, if you could change that part to say de-license the main dining room at Prairie Trails, that will allow us to have the catered event on the one side but still allow us to serve all our golfers on the other side.
And that, any, thank you, Tabitha. Any, that would lead me to the questions. What do we mean by de-license at Prairie Trails, the main dining room?
Currently Prairie Trails has a cereal malt beverage license for the whole building and tomorrow there's an event out that wishes to have wine and other full strength liquor and beer. And so they have a bartending company coming in to serve them there. If we didn't specify the main dining room, we wouldn't be able to sell our cereal malt beverage to our golfers. So, we're going to split it up.
Is that E. Koga? Kaioka?
Kansas Gas and Oil.
Yeah, Kaioka. Watch those guys.
I won't be there, but I will tell them about...
That's Patrick's turn. Not to say it. Okay. Any more questions or comments on the consent agenda? Now I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that consent agenda as presented be approved?
Second. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Home in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item on our agenda would be advisory board appointments. This is something that we met about at a work session. I think all these, all these are individuals that we have had discussions about. Any further comments or additions to this list from anybody? Tabitha, should I?
You typically, when you receive applications after you review in work session, you will review them again. You will review any new ones in a work session. You have a work session next Tuesday, but it's completely up to you if you would like to...
I'm okay with that because I think there's some questions about, about an open spot on the Planning Commission. Herb, when you and I spoke about today, whether or not that spot's really open yet.
We've received that one for Planning Commission, but like you said, that needed to be discussed a little. We have an application from Jim Holderman for the Board of Zoning Appeals and we have an application from Brett Rumsberg for the Parks and Rec Board.
Okay. Well, I guess I'd suggest we go ahead with these nominations so these boards can be filled up to their capacity as of last week and then talk about them in our next work session. Additional, non additional applications.
I don't have to read through the whole list, I just read the bottom.
Just say as presented, like in the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the advisory board appointees as presented?
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Home in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next on our agenda is a KDHE loan amendment for project number 392, Eldorado Sewer Improvements.
Yes, Mayor, tonight we're asking you to consider approving an ordinance revising our original loan agreement with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for sewer improvements. The revision is to include a 15-inch cure-in-place pipe lining of a 15-inch sanitary sewer interceptor line, which is located in south, south of Eldorado. Along this, you see Constant Creek. The line is clay and we have had some issues with it being undermined along the creek bank. So the process, the contract will go in and do a cure-in-place lining of that pipe to reinforce it in both and as well make it watertight. And then as well, we're asking you to include in the revision also the pipe bursting work that was done on West Central from the, basically the hospital to Taylor Street. Sorry, my image is trying to load up here. What that project was, was in desperate need, we had an undersized eight-inch line that was, had failure points and also couldn't keep up with what weather flows. And the hospital has experienced problems in the past as well as around the middle school area, the old middle school area. So we were able to ream that eight-inch clay line and place in a 14-inch pipe. So what this does is revise our loan, which is our CDVG project that is currently underway. And that would move our total to $1,290,877. Of that, the Kansas Department of Commerce is paying $500,000. This is a 20-year loan, biannual payments with an interest rate of 1.95% and a quarter percent service fee. It would be our intention, if the rates are favorable, that we refinance this with general obligation bonds in the future if we could foresee any savings, just as we recently did a few weeks ago, or a month or so ago.
This isn't, this is adding to the project that we were doing on the south side of town?
Correct, Mayor.
Number please.
G-1216.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? I guess I have to ask, what was, it increased it from what to what and it still fits within our budgeted payment schedule we were going to do for this? This is not something that's obviously out of bounds?
Our rates will cover it as we've forecasted.
Okay.
This added an additional $351,137.85. The reaming of the clay line on Central was $240,000 and the lining of the 15-inch along Constant Creek to the south of town is $70,000.
Thank you. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance number G-1216, an ordinance authorizing the execution of the Second Amendment to the loan agreement between Eldorado, Kansas and the State of Kansas, acting by and through the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for the purpose of obtaining a loan from the Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund for the purpose of financing a wastewater treatment project, establishing a dedicated source of revenue for repayment of such loan, authorizing and approving certain documents in connection therewith, and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the Second Amendment to the loan agreement be approved.
All right, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Home in favor, say aye.
It's a roll call, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is. All right, roll call.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Law?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkins?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Next on our agenda is new business. Anything from the commissioners for new business?
It must be made because the flower baskets are coming out. They're already pretty, even though they're not as bushy as they will be.
Make flowers.
Yeah, I'd need to personally thank Sue for the baskets because it inspired my wife to purchase four rather large window boxes I get installed on my house now. And I'm sure she'll fill those with flowers. Also wanted to thank my wife as of yesterday for putting up with me for 34 years. And she's in Wichita and home watching this, so. And then also wanted to remember longtime Eldorado resident, Wilma Dawn McGinnis, recently passed away. She was living in Georgia with her daughter and she was a really neat lady and I'd known her my whole life. And there will be a memorial back here in Eldorado for Trinity Church. I think it's in June somewhere. And that's all I have.
I was up in Kansas City this weekend and their water rates are going to go from $109 to $235 because they got to separate the storm water from the sewer water from running down the river. Is that something that Eldorado is going to have to do here in the future?
What I think is going to happen is that at some, okay, to begin with, in Eldorado, we separate them. In the, in the past, there were lots of cities that just treated it all as one and you put your storm sewer in the sewer. And that's in your older communities, so more back east. The United States of America, it's easy to find cities. And so I think at some point in time, someone will ask us to do something with storm water. And actually, they won't ask. It'll come down from Washington and we'll be required to do something. I'm not sure how that can practically be done because to take the same kind of plant that we have and because it's storm water, it would be huge. And there's just, I mean, I don't know where most cities could find a spot to build something to handle it. But we have a permit, I think we just renewed our permit for storm water in the last, last month. And so we have a permit to do our wastewater plant. We have the same permit to do storm water. And we identify where we discharge into the river. We have to, as it is, we have to take samples on the Walnut, West Branch, isn't it?
Constant Creek and Walnut upstream of the river.
Upstream and down below town in big storm events so we can tell them how we impact. So, it seems to me like government is laying the groundwork for that to happen. Today not. And because this was going to be huge expense, I'd guess that it will take the federal government a long time to get around to making it happen. And I guess the thing that makes me think about it is the signs that we've now made and put around town that are reflective at night, I think that rule first came out in the 90s maybe. And they may have backed off again. And so it takes a long time for them to make it because all the people, all the other governments complain about it. We just did it because it was the right thing to do. I'd say keep an eye out about it. I'd say keep an eye out about it, but I guess I'm not convinced, I may be old enough that I'll die before then. Because it's going to be too, it's going to be huge.
What do you see in some of the, in Kansas, the way the only cities, the governments that are regulated are based on population? You have your phase one communities, which started being regulated and required a permit to discharge storm sewer in the early two thousands, somewhere in there, and that's your Wichita's, Olathe's. Phase two cities, which Eldorado is one of, there's twenty of those in the state of Kansas that have a permit required to discharge. And that involves paperwork, notifying, talking contractors, public education, test sampling. As Herb has mentioned, we have really taken small, small steps. You will see communities like Wichita, Olathe require treatment on site for commercial projects, certain types of catch basins that catch debris, catch oil. And Eldorado's not there yet, but it seems maybe sooner or later it's going to affect construction cost and development cost in Eldorado because we may or may not, depends on how it goes, be required to do those sorts of things.
And I mean, we, we have that utility was really to answer those phase two. And we got on it because the Walnut was declared a clean stream or some, there's some designation of the Walnut that...
Outstanding natural resource.
There you go. And so that's how, how we got in the second group.
And the good news is our water is cleaner leaving town than it is.
Right. After we dump our stuff in it, it's cleaner, so.
I know it's thirty-five years from now, but I couldn't imagine paying a two hundred and thirty-five dollar water bill, just that water.
Two hundred and thirty-five dollars, oh, what's the unit?
A month.
A month.
For, to pay for this project that they're doing up there in Kansas City. It was all over the news because the elderly people were worried about it because every year the water rates are going to go up to pay for this and...
As Herb said, those are communities that for years and years and years have gotten away with discharging sanitary sewer waste into the creeks and not treating it when that every rain falls. Where we're different, we're separate, we're combined, sanitary sewer system and storm sewer. And we have the capacity to handle rain events at our plant.
For our wastewater.
Wastewater, yeah.
But the other thing, you need to be thankful you lived in Eldorado today. I mean, you don't have to go very far outside our city limit to pay a hundred, two hundred dollars a month on a, on a water bill. Some of our neighbors paying that without, without any kind of sewer, without trash. So thank the commission that bought the lake.
The other thing I wanted to remind everybody that May third is the last day to register to vote and, and please vote for our schools.
The only thing that I was going to mention was I heard, I keep hearing great reviews about the food at Prairie Trails, so I'd encourage folks to go out there and check that out, mind that it's open. But also in the same conversation, I heard someone say, "Well, I can't go out there because we're not members." So I just wanted to reiterate to folks that it is a public facility and it is not a country club any longer. And so make sure to go out there and enjoy dinner if you choose and say the food's great. I need to get out there myself.
It is pretty good. We've been out there several times on the Friday night fried chicken buffet. Lots of different varieties of fried chicken. I would echo that. Okay. I've got a couple of things. I, we, I don't know, looking at our reports, it's early in the month, so there probably not been a whole lot. I will share that I've done, been to a few things this past few weeks. Mayor's Leadership Conference, which was in Junction City, was a chance for all the mayors of Kansas to gather together and share a few days, maybe share some war stories, if you will, but also just kind of learn a little bit about a few topics, legislative update and budget process tips, which were some good takeaways from there. REAP, the Regional Economic Area Partnership Board meeting was, was two weeks ago, I attended that. And in that, I'm a fairly new member to that board, but felt honored to be recommended or nominated to go on the City to City Tour, which is coming up in September. But I did, I accepted on the condition that my commission would, would approve that I would make that trip. So I would appreciate the consensus from the commission for me to take this trip with the REAP group as they take a city-to-city tour to Nashville, so.
Are you gonna, you're not going to chime in and tell them you ought to go?
I go all the time. I think you definitely should go.
Well, I'd, I'd like, I guess I'd like a motion approved for me to, to go from this commission, commission to represent the city at that.
I move, I mean, so move second.
Move second, all in favor?
Aye.
Four to zero, I abstain. But if there's extra seats, I'll let you know. So I'm, I'm excited about that. It's a chance to go, there's, there's several individuals in the Wichita area going on this. It's a chance to kind of see what's going on in similar cities to the size of Wichita and the like.
Well, they've done, they've done some cities that they needed to go to. They did Oklahoma City and of course Oklahoma City's really made strides. They did...
Memphis last year.
The, the other Chattanooga, that's the city that, I mean...
That's probably more Wichita.
That's more Wichita and really making huge strides. Meaning again, it was mayor and their elected bodies just said, "We're done being dirty and nasty. We want to be something else."
Nashville will probably be a lot bigger by the time you get there in September?
September.
I think it's around every single day.
And now one thing that they do that we kind of emulate, but not to their scale, Nashville doesn't let you work on highways around Nashville during the day. That would inconvenience people that live in Nashville. They do it at night to people traveling through and all their people are home in bed. And so if you're planning a trip that goes through Nashville, don't go at night because it's bad, the traffic in Nashville is awful.
Better than a plane.
I want to be riding more than driving.
Yeah, don't, or just don't. Stay on little, in city streets are okay. Interstates are awful.
Thank you for that. I'm excited to go and represent the community in the region. Mayor's Summit, this is, this is kind of, this comes out of part of Breg and kind of a Tincharin County Region of mayors that get together, hosted by Mayor Longwell in Wichita. This past session, we talked about, we meet quarterly. This past session, we talked about branding the region. Mayor Longwell speaks of a regional approach to, and I appreciate that. But talked about a marketing campaign that would brand the region rather than just, just Wichita or just any individual city. So I'm interested to see how we, as we start talking about some of our branding, how we fit into that. And we had a really neat thing last week, the Breg Oil and Gas Sector. Breg is the, we hosted it at the Oil Museum and they, we generally talked about the, the industry and had some business partners from this area, producers as well as, as a service industry, generally talked about how that fits into the larger region. Oil and Gas is one of, I think, is it's, can't remember now off the top of my head, but there's, I think there's seven sectors of, of economic development that, that organization's focusing on. So they had a chance to host them here in town and that was, that was good. Eldorado Inc. was last week. They had a presentation on, on the bond issue and had some questions about that. They're working, the thing I would report on is they're working on an additional CDVG grant for housing and that grant's due August thirty-first, so they're working on that. And continue to work on overviews of the, of economic benefit from some of the, some of the work that's happened here over the years and industry that's come to town. Rock Fest, if you were unable to, to go that, that was at the museum last week. It was good. Great, it was a nice turnout and an event at the Kansas Oil Museum. And I'm on the library board. We have not met, but I would share that the book fair is this weekend, so. That would be it for my reports.
Prairie Trails did have a Prairie Trails Advisory Board meeting Thursday. I had already committed to go to a ribbon cutting for Brandon Demo's insurance agency here, but I did read the minutes and apparently our, the New Greens are coming in great. They were a little concerned last week. They were scared to death that this, the hail was going to hit it and if it had, they really didn't have a plan to get out on them. But they're under the loving care and watchful eye of Jason and his staff out there, so I think they're, so far, things couldn't really be going any better for the New Greens.
When I look at them, the grass is coming up really well. I think Jason said in one of his updates that they water them six minutes, an hour, all during the day. And so they're getting lots of water and love and the greens I've looked at, they're coming in all over real well, so the rain didn't appear to impact the seed, didn't wash it down. And so, yeah, I, I think it'll, if you go out to the club, turn your head, the greens look good. And they, they're really going to change the play on the old nine. They're going to, depending on your point of view, to me, they'll make me laugh because your ball's going to do things it's never done before. And to the people that are really good, they may be sad because they may hurt their handicap. But if you have a really, really bad one, it just make you laugh.
I can do a report on the Airport Advisory Committee. They met the first part of the month. Caleb gave an update on runway fifteen dash thirty-three rehab. There are some necessary changes that the FAA wants made. And as soon as the changes have been made, it'll be advertised to go to bid and hopefully construction will start in the fall of 2016. This project's going to resaw and reseal all joints along with some panel replacement where needed. Runway four twenty-two, city crew came out and they cleaned out the cracks in the asphalt and put new crack sealing materials in where needed. And hopefully that will extend the life by when it freezes and all the cracks are filled. And then the Transport Safety Administration came out for their annual visit. Then we have Parks and Rec. We met last week. We got an update on the spring activities, being soccer, and it came to an end last Saturday. My grandson made a field goal. Go Andrew. We got an update on summer softball and baseball and also the Heights League. And then the master plan that we saw, had a work session with pictures of the different aquatic center fields, tennis courts, et cetera, was also presented to the rec board and discussion followed, sometimes quite lively. But we got through that and everything was fine. And they do want us to remember to include them when we're making a big decision.
Thank you. I would just add real quickly, Thursday is your prayer breakfast, the mayor's, and Kendra will be the guest speaker and I, and I think tickets are still available, so if you're interested, it's Thursday morning at the Civic Center. And it's always a great morning, you're out of there by the time you need to go to work. And so if you're interested in coming, contact the Chamber of Commerce.
And? And?
And?
Sunday is Mother's Day.
Sunday is Mother's.
Okay. Anything else, new, new business? City managers' report.
Yeah, you can go first.
Okay, I have the quarterly update for Brian, who couldn't be here tonight, so he had gathered this information last week. Water sales, the Kansas Water Office has stated for some time that Eldorado has a long-range water supply, so we've been engaging in conversations with local communities, trying to help them with their long-range planning and in hopes that we can help with drought protection and things there, so, and increase our water saves. So that's where we're at there. Parks and Recreation, the commission is continuing to discuss funding and we continue to work with local partners to find opportunities to complete some of the low-hanging fruit items. Court area plan, we've received an RFQ from consultants. The committee hopes to meet soon to review those. There has not been a funding source addressed for the plan at this time. Roadways, Reclamite is being laid in the southeast quadrant of the city this summer? Yes, this summer. And there will be new truck route signage going up at all four entrances to the city soon. Economic Development Partnerships, we are working on a housing assessment tool and a grant through CDVG. We continue to discuss projects and possibilities with Eldorado Inc. The land bank, staff recommend continuing to investigate state statutes pertaining to land banks. And just a plug here, there, we do have several lots for sale in the Greiler addition. If anybody has questions about those lots, they can contact the engineering department, three two one ninety-one hundred. And let's see, personnel development and recruitment, citywide SDI classes start in June, we'll be starting with the supervisors and then moving through all of the employees. We'll start with kind of a combination of groups and then after that, we'll move to department, specific departments to help them with some conflict resolution items. Detective Murphy is attending an advanced finding words class in Scott City. This helps him learn how to communicate better with children that have been victims of violence and things like that. Troy Jellison just completed his first year at the Executive Fire Officer Program. Connectivity and technology, we are continuing to work with Cox Communications on connectivity solutions and working to provide Wi-Fi service in open areas. Community image, we're working intensively with the Haverhill Beautification Team. The city's always looking for partners to help with cleanup at the four entrances to the city. So if any local civic groups would like to help out, they can contact us here at City Hall, just ask for Brian or myself and we'll get you in touch with the right people. The fifteen-dollar dump truck program continues to help with cleanup and things that goes through October thirteenth. You can call the Public Works Department and reserve one of those. And the fire department will be burning around the stadium in that coming week, kind of help with some of the grass growth out there. Continued citywide development, we, the commission approved an IRB for ComFAB and we have one for GCI coming up this next meeting and those are helping with some development on Sixth Avenue. And the Southwest Eldorado CDVG sewer grant product's nearly complete, that Scott, we talked about a little bit ago. We don't have anything new to report on increased dining options at this time. The airport development, as Commissioner Wilkinson said, we are going to be bidding out some projects here pretty quickly and hope to start some construction soon there. Educational facilities, ballots for the school's bond issue are being mailed out to registered voters this week and need to be returned by May twenty-ninth. Is that correct?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, sorry. ended the first quarter with a cash balance of a little over ten million. Um, at the end of April, each department should have approximately sixty-six point sixty-eight percent of their budget remaining for the year, and we have all, all but two departments have that, and those two departments have large payments that are budgeted, uh, to be made in the, at the first part of the year, and so that kind of decreases their budget for the year. But now that, those expenses are done, and they won't have those anymore, so. Um, and that was for tourism and sewer admin. And they were loan payments and payments to the Broncos and the stadium payments.
The, so tourism, um, it's most notable in it, because the Broncos payment is twenty, twenty-five?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, and their bond payment is thirty or forty.
Something.
And so, it's a hundred and, two hundred thousand dollar fund, and there's fifty, so it hits it real hard. But, we take it out on the front end and not the back end, and so it doesn't look good. The other thing that I'd note is, we really, we don't really spend, it's eight point six, is if you divided twelve into a hundred, it's eight point six. And so, we really don't spend a hundred, I mean, eight point six a month, but it is a good place to look, and so, money's coming in exactly as we expected, ahead of schedule, and money's going out slower than we expect, so everything's good today. Other than not enough money.
Any questions?
How many roofie permits so far this year?
Can I get back to you on that? I really haven't seen the, the latest, but. And I think, I think, I think I've already got Amanda's.
Amanda's sent it to you the other day.
Right, and I just haven't forwarded it yet. I'll get you all the building permits. It's not like last year, but it wasn't bad either, um, cause I, I took it and looked at the budget to check what we're budgeting for permits, and it looked to me like we're on track for what we thought we'd do, and what we could budget next year. So, it's not gonna be like last year, but I do think that the number that, the ones that have come in are the commercial ones. You had a bunch of commercial that were waiting for Stanfield maybe to catch up, and so, that number, that dollar number maybe seems up to me as I remember that report. But I'll get it out this week. The only other thing I was gonna add was, uh, no, two things. One is, I was gonna mention that the grass is up on the greens, and we've already talked about that. The other thing I wanted to mention is, um, we've been asked, Butler Real Water District Number Five has, uh, a year or so ago acquired Butler Real Water District Number Eight. Eight buys their water today from the city of Wichita. The quality of the water that they're getting is not what they get, R Five gets it from the city of Eldorado. They're used to our water, they like our water, they'd like to start buying it and shipping it to R Eight. They're planning a pipeline to get R Eight new water from someone other than Wichita, so right now, they're considering other sources. Um, they've asked us to consider partnering with them with a line from Eldorado West. Um, for R Eight, they think it'll tie in down south of Andover, if I remember right. And so, um, staff is currently developing, um, rate of return on investment, and we're getting numbers that we'll get to you all. Um, but I did just wanna introduce the topic, I, I hoped we'd had more stuff ready for you tonight, but that didn't get done, and I apologize for that. But so, it's something that we'll be bringing to you for your consideration.
Any other questions or comments for the City Manager's Report? Um, that kinda, your, your last comment kinda leads into executive session. Uh, we were gonna have some of that discussion, and that material's not ready to discuss yet, so at, at this time, we will not anticipate having an executive session tonight. Unless there's, uh, another reason for the commission you'd like to, to do that. Okay? We will, uh, we will thus move, move on past and not have executive session.
Will it, Mr. Mayor, I move in second.
Move in second, we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We're adjourned. Thank you.